Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board to order. It is Thursday, June 10th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. This is a remote meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board in accordance with the Governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency. The June 10th, 2021 public meeting of the Planning Board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/lakecam backslash. You do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakem.tv backslash. For the record, members present tonight on the Planning Board, I have myself, Mark Knox, present. I have Peter Conroy present, Michelle McEckern present, and Jack Lynch present. Planning Board Clerk Kathy Murray is present. And the first item on our agenda, this backup step. As we go through the hearings and meeting tonight, if you're asked to speak by the Chair, please identify yourself by name and address that you're representing. The first item on the agenda is a continuation of a public hearing, continued to seven o'clock tonight, presented by Zenith Consulting Engineers for the application or approval of a definitive, definitive plan submitted by Biscio and Sons Construction Incorporated for a four lot subdivision located at Rachel's Way, including three Rachel's Way. M014-B004-L006-2 and four Rachel's Way. Also, it's lot block. So at this time, I'd like to turn the floor over to Jamie from Zenith Consulting Engineers.
Good evening, Jamie Bissonette, Zenith Consulting Engineers. I here on behalf of Biscio and Sons Construction. And the site that we're looking to discuss tonight would be Rachel's Way definitive subdivision plan. It was two weeks ago, I believe, that we originally presented the subdivision. And if, if the Chairman allows for me to share my screen, I can kind of run through quickly again.
Absolutely.
Okay, so right now, what we're looking to do is Rachel's Way is an existing way that presently ends at this point right in here. You can see this dashed line, which is the property line for the right of way. We're looking to extend it, which would be a new area of about an additional 14,000 square feet of right of way. And doing this, we're also looking to improve the right of way. Right now, there's a little bit of pavement in the front and then it's gravel. We're looking to improve the roadway with our 14-foot wide pavement and six-foot wide gravel strip and an actual cul-de-sac around for fire safety vehicles, ambulances, et cetera. We're looking to provide frontage for four total houses on this roadway. Frontage for lots one or one A, which is an existing house that currently gets frontage off of Rachel's Way, lots two, three, and four. This property here, 132 County, actually has sufficient frontage on County Way, on County Street. I apologize. So their frontage is actually on County Street. As part of our plan, we're looking to convey stormwater via grass swales that go on the side of the proposed improvements within the right of way and down into a drainage basin. The drainage basin is going to do some infiltration and will also have an outlet pipe that will meet or flow so that we're not increasing runoff in the post-development condition. This is, they call this a cross-country style drainage. It's a nice low-impact way of designing. The other thing that we're doing is we're not looking to dig in really in the dirt here. We're looking to utilize the existing grade here. That's the natural grade that's going down. So it's, it's, it's a very nice friendly, you know, basin where we're building up the back to be able to retain the water that we need and treat it efficiently. As far as profile is concerned for the roadway, the profile is actually very, very gentle. We start off at a 1% at the roadway. We go down to a 2 and 3/4%. Our steepest slope is a little less than four and a half, down to a one again. And then at the cul-de-sac, we're at a 3 and 1/2%. We typically try to get the cul-de-sac to have a little bit more pitch because the water, instead of just running straight down, it's running around and into the, into the swale itself. So that gives us a little bit more pitch to help address that water to get into the drainage basin as neatly. I did, at the last meeting, I believe I was instructed to speak with Mr. Bouchard. He had written in a comment and said that conservation would, would need a filing. He's 100% correct. I did speak with Mr. Bouchard this week. And he thought that our application for the work would be including the houses right now. I explained to him that right now, we're looking for the subdivision approval with the drainage. Typically, we try to file for the individual houses as we know what's going to be built. So when the Bisiows are, you know, decide that maybe this will be a Cape or a Colonial and they, they set it up exactly how they want it, there'll be a notice of intent filed for any work within the 100 foot on this lot and this lot as well, and any lot. He was very content with that answer and, and said that as long as he knows a notice of intent or several of them are going to be coming, he doesn't have an issue with, with this project. I think overall, that's about it, but I'd be happy to try to address any question. Oh, I'm sorry. There was one more thing. I know that the, we talked about homeowners association and mechanisms to ensure that this would remain private, be maintained, stormwater be maintained, similar to what we ran into with Bella, Bella Way. And Barbara had also, I believe it was Barbara mentioned that she wanted to make sure there was a note in there about plowing, snow plowing as well. Earlier today, I received from Attorney O'Shaughnessy a copy of those such documents that I forwarded to Kathy, and I hope they've been put in your packet. Again, I know the Board doesn't necessarily go too crazy into legal documents, but what we did was we have the document available. And Attorney O'Shaughnessy was gracious enough to highlight the key areas for the Board. I think in my non-legal mind going through it, it seems to address the major concerns that have been presented by the Board for this project and previous ones that I'm aware of. So if you have any questions regarding the plan or non-legal questions on this document, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Okay, I have a few.
Okay.
So could you go back and reshare your screen? I just, I want to have a solid understanding on the setbacks from the wetlands before I get started. On the infiltration basin as well as the roadway swale at that wetland that's just south of between lots three and four?
Right here.
What's that distance there from roadway to?
This, this is probably, this is right around 80 feet to the.
From the wetland?
Yeah, this is the 50-foot buffer zone in here, Mark. And then there's the 100-foot buffer comes right in here. So we're, we're right around 75, 80 feet.
Okay. And about the infiltration basin, is the back of that within or not?
It's, it's out of it. Yep.
Okay. All right. I mean, if Chairman Bouchard said that, that's fine, because a little bit of the work is within, but if he's satisfied with NOIs for the houses, that's fine.
And, and he does want an NOI for the roadway as well.
But he does?
Yes, he does. Or he needs some kind of a, and we completely agree that he has the right to ask court. We are less than 100 feet, so we will file a notice of intent for this.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I think the, the swale is the only thing that I have some concerns about. And where that's going to be not only flowing past the closest point to the wetlands, but it's also for recharge. I'm sure they'll want to look at that.
Yeah, the, the swale itself isn't for recharge. The, the basin itself will offer the recharge. The, the grass swale itself, we're, we're not putting in crushed stone or anything in the bottom to maximize infiltration. We're only utilizing the basin, the basin for its infiltration purposes.
Okay, maybe I was mistaken, but I, I watched the, the last meeting, last night or the night before. And I thought you had said, when it's a grass swale like that, sometimes it does help with recharge.
It, it certainly can help with recharge and reducing, reducing suspended solids. But in our case, for our drainage design, we're not accounting for any of it, even though it will, it will happen. So it's, it's designed as if we're not getting any recharging this way.
Okay. So it's a pretty long drainage structure, basically, this swale itself. And the couple of concerns that I have, is it within the layout of the road? Or is it on the private property of those two or three house lots?
Sure, zoom in a little bit. The, the swale, the base of the swale and, and the actual low point of the swale is the, is this flatter portion towards the back. And so you can see that really the swale falls in the right of way. The piece that kind of comes over like this is going to be the actual crown of the swale, the high point. And then we're catching into existing grade that's there. So it's kind of, it, it would be it, the, the swale itself, you're talking about where water is going to flow is actually in the right of way.
Okay, and the backside of it though goes just beyond, which would be the, the back of the berm of the second side of the swale?
That's correct. Yep, the, the grading, just like, just like we have to do when we're trying to catch slopes on the sides of roads. It's, it's very similar.
And could you, you have a cross-section that you showed in the last meeting of the swale? Pull that up.
Yes, sir.
So with the grading you just showed, I get the sense that where, where you end your drawing on the right side there, it actually drops back down.
It would, just like over on the side here. I mean, we could always improve that detail to kind of show the slope going down beyond there. In some cases, when we're doing these, they actually go up as well. It depends on the points in the road.
Well, so there, there's a subdivision, or it's actually a lot of former lots along an existing roadway in Lakeville that people have been back to the Planning Board because there was a proposed swale. It didn't show well on the plan, then supposedly it was filled in by a bunch of the house lots. Now it runs over the road and causes icing. So I have two concerns during construction and until it's established, that backside of the swale, until grass is established in that, I have concerns of it being washed out.
Okay.
My, as far as the construction and long-term maintenance, also the culverts. I have concerns with the maintenance of those. And I know I, I did see the document that O'Shaughnessy put forward. I think it's called the Declaration of Trust for Rachel's Way.
Yes.
And I, I would like if, I think the swale and culverts specifically were mentioned in that so that it's very clear that a swale was intended on this and that it's part of the construction.
Okay.
And I, I don't want to overstep, but if there was ever an issue in, let's say a, a great flood type of situation and the swale between lots two and three did wash out.
Sure.
Should, should we have an easement put on the backside of that swale? Just in case somebody needs to maintain onto those lots without issue?
I, I don't think that's a, a bad idea at all. You mean for, for grading purposes, run a, run an easement?
Yeah, yeah, because technically the backside of the swale is on their property and that's what's going to hold the water in. And it's probably a little bit of cheap insurance to say that, you know, I'm sure Mr. Biscio is going to do that for a certain amount of time to maintain that. And then you, you get one disgruntled homeowner, who knows, maybe just digs it apart, doesn't like the lump. And he has the right to go back and rebuild it because it's a drainage structure.
Yep, understood. Yeah, we, we can definitely address that. That's not a problem. We, we can add in, geez, I'll look, it, it looks like we could probably get away with a 10-foot easement. You know, starting in this section over in here and, and running it, maybe. I mean, we, this is all easement area, so maybe up to this point where we have an easement. Because this is easement area and then we, we could pick it back up and wrap it around here, over to here, where we have swale again. So yeah, I don't see that as a problem. We'll look at, we'll look at it and see. I think a 10-foot easement would be more than sufficient to get that grading encompassed in that.
So my only other concern is if we were to approve this. Typically, in recent months, when we've looked at roadways that are not going to be accepted by the town, we really haven't held a surety or we've maybe held a one lot, building permit surety. I guess I want to publicly negotiate with you right now to, to make sure that the Planning Board doesn't have an issue. And what would be the release of surety? Because it's not going to be town meeting.
Well, I can tell you what, what we proposed as part of this plan set, and I'm heading in the wrong direction. Is, is over in here. What we did was we, we proposed that the roadway itself, that no new, no building permits for lots two, three, and four, which, keeping in mind, lot one already is a house that's being lived in. So we're not seeking a building permit for that, that lot. But lots two, three, and four would only be issued building permits after the, the gravel, 20-foot wide gravel roadway is constructed and the drainage is installed. That being the swale and the basin. And then prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the final buildable lot, the proposed 20-foot wide gravel roadway must be paved 14 feet while retaining a six-foot wide gravel shoulder on one side of the roadway.
Could we add to that final thing that the swale have grass growing in it?
I, I personally don't have any problem with that. Do you, Mr. Biscio?
No, I don't. I don't have a problem with that.
Yep. And, and Mr. Knox, did you mean that to be before the building permits issued or before the occupancy?
Somewhere in there. I mean, I'm not going to be a stickler about it as long as we have something that, whether it's occupancy or a stability building permit, I think that it probably makes sense to be occupancy because you want most of the construction done at that point and the lawn seeded and not trucks coming and going. I want that driveway paved and the culvert in so that they're not. All that work would happen afterwards if we were going to do it at building permit or, you know, in the beginning rather than after, they'd have to try and make a driveway before they build.
Yeah, my, my thought is, is that the Bisiows are probably going to construct the swale and probably lawn and seed it in towards the beginning for long-term stabilization. The last thing they want to do is keep raking out any types of erosion and rutting that could happen in a swale like that. So I would imagine that they'll probably seed it and, and get it established sooner than later.
And so would you gentlemen both say that that's your plan? Would you agree to?
Agree to, yes.
Okay.
Doing everything at the same time.
Okay, no, that's great. Like I said, I just, I want to make sure it's stabilized that there's, there's not an issue with one lot that kind of lingers for a long time and something gets overlooked as well. So it would be very nice because that is really the drainage for the roadway that gets done early on.
Yep.
So I, I think that concludes all my questions. I'd like to just run through the Planning Board members and just see if they have any other concerns that have cropped up since the last meeting for them. Peter, do you have any thing you'd like to add or?
I was going to ask Jamie if he thinks that two feet, like in the, in the process of this, what's, what's the harm in going to three feet or even greater? Simply because a two-foot, a, a, a two-foot ditch, I guess you could call it. Within five years, it's no longer two feet. You know how it, it's going to grow in and then you have just barely, barely a depression. Is there any advantage to going wider right now? So that when the thing's fully grown and done, that then you're back to, then you're at two feet once, once it's been growing for a while? You know what I'm saying?
I, yeah, I do. I, I.
Two feet's not very wide, in my opinion. And that, like, like Mark said, that's a long road and it could see a lot of water on some days.
Our experience has been that with maintenance, proper construction, the two-foot will probably be okay. But Mr. Biscio, would you be okay with me modifying that to a three-foot wide, just at the bottom swale?
Are you going three foot wide at the bottom and then how far, how wide at the top?
It, well, it's, it's only going to make it wider by one additional foot because we're going to still keep the slopes on the side the same.
Okay, so at what point, how far down do you think it's truly necessary to do it? Like, you're really saying at the bottom, like last 150 feet or something?
I, I think what he's saying is that the bottom of the swale itself is going to start to fill in over time with sediment and debris?
Yeah, no, I, I was understanding that part. Yeah.
I get it. You necessarily, you don't necessarily need three feet all the way up.
Exactly, because the volume, it's, you know, more towards the bottom is where you're going to get the heavy volume.
Yeah, that, that's actually a really good point, Jared. Let's, you know, maybe, maybe we look at going to a three-foot wide swale when we get closer to the sweatland area in here. We did have to go from one culvert sized over here to two culverts because of the increase in flow. So maybe we look at increasing the size of the culvert somewhere in the 127, 128 contour range. And we could take it from a two-foot here into a three-foot, just to make sure that, that, that issue doesn't arise, Peter.
I think that's a, I think that's a good, that's a good solution. You don't need it way up high at, at, you know, at 138, 139, 140, it's not going to see much. But the water's going to be trucking by the time it gets to where you were just thinking of, so. That's fine by me. That's all I had.
All right, thank you.
And the, the overall contour that you've designed and they'll make, I, I guess I would rather see gradual that's maintainable and mowable rather than steep and challenging to maintain. I know, just from the picture of the cross-section, I mean, it's, it's kind of hard to tell. Sometimes those things change in the field, but again, I'm not trying to design it as much as just sensibly, build it sensibly to make it more maintainable long-term so that it does last long and do, do what it's supposed to do. Anything else, Peter? You good?
I'm good. Thank you.
Michelle, would you like to?
Yeah, last time we talked about the Fire Chief's concerns. I was just curious to know if you were able to meet with him or discuss anything and, you know, satisfy any of those concerns.
Um, my, my understanding, I, I did look at the chief's letter. Kathy was, was kind enough and sent it over. I, I read through the letter. I actually went through the fire code. He had referenced a 5% slope being the maximum. My interpretation from the NFPA that he referenced is actually a 10% slope is for a travel fire lane is actually the maximum. I, I would be very shocked if a 5% was the maximum because ADA compliant handicap ramps are 5% and steeper. So it, it, it just didn't, didn't make sense on this, on the slope. Plus, we're underneath it, so I didn't really see a concern to bother the chief over based on his note. He, he said we might be pressing the upper edge at almost 5%. And again, when I read the regulations, I think the, the percentage is actually 10%.
Okay, and honestly, I, I think looking at the plans, they, it, it appears to be steeper than when you, when you look at it. I, I drove down there and it was just a very gradual slope. So I, I, I would assume that if he, he did look at it, you know, he would probably think the same.
Yeah, there's, there's many, many, many roads in town that are much steeper. It's a very gentle slope. So it's actually one of the nicer sloped roads that, that we've gotten to work on just naturally. We're able to keep most of the natural grade and it works very calm, very easily.
That's all I have. Thank you, Jimmy.
Thanks.
Jack, do you have any questions or concerns or anything you'd like to add?
Not really. I, I brought up a couple of concerns at the last meeting to Jamie, which he's satisfied. And you just, maybe your conversation with him earlier tonight just reinforced that, so I think I'm fine.
So now we're, we're going through this and being a subdivision that's not going to be accepted by the town. But we have a drainage system that's a requires a follow-up with this final inspection. We haven't called for a peer review on this. Jamie, how are we going to close that out as far as? I, I think that we should require you to provide a stamped as-built at the end of that construction so that it shows the drainage trail swell was built and you, you've stamped it as completed. So that when it's time to release that surety of the final occupancy on the final house lot, that you provide that document.
I'm okay with that. Are you okay with that, Mr. Biscio? Yep, yes, sir. We can do that.
Okay. Jamie, one thing, on that, on the plan, on the roadway, it's marked private way?
It is.
Okay, I, I don't have it up. No, do I have my iPad tonight, so?
So in, in this case, as far as the definitive subdivision, which this is what gets recorded, variable with layout, private way.
Oh, got it. Thank you.
And then also over in the notes, it's proposed to be a private, private right of way. And I underlined it to emphasize. And then also over in the notes, it's proposed to be a private, private right of way, and I underlined it to emphasize.
If there's no other discussion, I guess I'd like to make a motion. I guess I'd like to make a, a conditional approval. Cause we have to still have the CONCOM thing come back to us. You know, you're gonna get them to do a notice of intent for the roadway, Jamie. And as you know, we typically don't like to sign a plan that's not finalized if they make any changes.
Sure.
So, what I'd like to do is basically give you a verbal approval tonight, and then you come back for signatures once you go through CONCOM.
Okay, so to do that, would the plan still be sent to the clerk for the twenty-day appeal period? Cuz the notice of decision, if you vote to approve it, the notice of decision would have to go out. And I'm just asking as more of a, I guess, question on how we're gonna handle it.
Yeah, yeah, it's a fair question. Well, what's your recommendation based on? You haven't gone through there yet. I, I don't see a problem with you getting through conservation because you're eighty feet away, but I just. I, I know that sometimes they'll make a tweak and I just want that to be shown on the plan of record.
Sure, Leo, do you, can, can we get your input on that or Jared? And Leo, you're muted. So, so if, if we, if we ask for approval tonight and they grant it. And the certificate of decision goes to the town clerk and we get through the twenty-day appeal period. Then the plan is to plan and if conservation asks us to change anything. Then we have to come back to the planning board and they have to tell us whether it's a significant or minor modification. And we proceed accordingly. If we file with conservation in the meantime, knowing that the planning board is happy with this. And will approve it once conservation's done with, with their notice for the. That we have twenty feet of roadway that's within the buffer zone.
Yeah.
That takes the risk out of it, once we get the approval on that.
But we can't move the road, correct?
The road is, I mean.
We can't go into Randy's land.
We, we would go onto Randy's land, so we really don't have a choice.
We don't have a choice of, the road is where the road is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't.
So our next step would be, once we get the road approved, our next step before we can proceed. We go to COMCOM to get permission, cuz we're within a hundred feet, correct?
That, that is correct. I think, I think the, the board's concern is that if. Even if the conservation has us tweak even the smallest of things. Then their plan wouldn't match the planning board's plan. And the planning board and the conservation want us to have the same plan of record.
So if they make a condition or concern about this, the swell, and they change the construction of it. For whatever reason, because they're very concerned about that. Breaking free and running into the wetlands, and all of a sudden now, they're telling you one thing and we've approved something else, we just don't wanna give. Then you gotta come back to us and. Again, we're not looking to stop you, we just want, if that's the case and CONCOM makes a change like that, we just want Jamie to come back with that. Edited plan, so that's the one we sign, we're not going to stop the project.
Yeah. Okay, so I guess that's what we'll have to do then.
I mean, we can, we can roll the dice, but again, if, if conservation has us change anything, it's gonna take much longer that way. Than if we just.
Right, exactly, so next thing, we'll go to COMCOM and then we'll come back.
Jared, you look like you wanted to say something.
I was just gonna say, whatever way you think is best to go about it, Jamie, that's all I was gonna say.
It's gonna, it's gonna take us a month to get through conservation because of D P file numbers and meetings, maybe forty-five days. If you guys can wait that time, then I would say, let's ask for a continuance to next month's meeting. And, and go that way.
Okay, thank you.
You, you want a continuance rather than a conditional approval?
I would love a conditional approval if we can do that.
That's, that's exactly what we just talked about, that you'll go through CONCOM and then come back with a plan for us to sign that goes through CONCOM.
Yep, I'm okay with that.
How's the rest of the planning board feel about that?
It's okay by me, Mark. I mean, I don't wanna set him back forty-five days certainly either, so I think this is probably the best of both options.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Alright, so I make a motion to conditionally approve. The definitive plan for Rachel's Way. Subject to CONCOM approval. The swale and culverts be written into the declaration of trust. The release of surety held until completion of all drainage and swale culverts with grass established in the swale. And the final inspection and a stamped as built provided by a licensed civil engineer.
Second that.
And I'm just gonna add one more thing to that, as well as all conditions written on the plan. So actually, with, with that motion, Jamie, you'll have to just make those couple of changes that I added in the documentation.
Understood, I'll have that for, when we come for sign, for, for the signing of the plan.
Alright, so we have a motion, do I have a second? Okay, motion and a second, all in favor, Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack? Myself, aye. So you guys are all set, we'd look forward to just, Jamie will. Reach out to Kathy to put you back on the agenda, just for a. Really just for us to vote, to sign the plan, that we just take a quick glance at from CONCOM when you get through them.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome, and good luck, guys.
Mr. Chairman, I, I know this is a little out of order, but I noticed that. Mr. and Mrs. Oral are on, and I'm not sure that they were, I informed that the Crooked Lane project was continued.
Well, we didn't vote on that yet, but you did request.
That's true, yeah, request for a continuance, you're absolutely right, do you want me to stick around for that?
I, I will pull things out of order because you guys are the only attendees.
It looks like Outback Engineering's on as well.
Yeah. Okay, that might be two-ten Kenneth Welch, so if you don't mind sticking around then. We'll do that next, Jamie.
I will, absolutely.
Alright, so the next item on our agenda is site plan review, two-ten Kenneth Welch Drive, update and clarification on approval. And in my notes, in the packet this week. It was, I, I saw correspondence and a concern about conservation having jurisdiction. We have a letter that clarifies that. Was a confusion of the address with three-ten Kenneth Welch, not two-ten. And that there is no wetlands near two-ten Kenneth Welch Drive. And the. I saw some correspondence from the fire chief about fire lane. Kathy, could you give some clarification on that, cuz I. Really not sure if he's satisfied or not. And you're muted. There you go.
I had spoken to Barbara when she came in about that, if the plan had to be redrawn, cuz I wasn't at that meeting, I wasn't sure from what I had watched. So she said that it did, but when I checked with. The fire chief, which is that email, you know, it appears that it doesn't, as long as it stays clear. And that he didn't feel that the plan would have to be withdrawn, just to clarify that and that you could come in and sign it.
Okay. So I, I do see a gentleman from Outback Engineering, you were representing this project, correct? Sorry, I know you're not muted, but I'm not getting volume from you. Nothing. Nothing muted now. If you, if you click on your screen, on your face, does it pop up and have to start audio? In here. Sean from Lake Camp.
Yeah. Can I jump in real quick?
Alright.
Uh, he might just have to hit the arrow next to the mute button and select the microphone that he has on his computer. That'd be the only solution I could think of. He can also try calling in and that would work as well.
Nope.
My recommendation would be just to call in through the number on the invitation, if he can.
Alright, wh- while we're working out the technical difficulties, I will jump ahead and we received. A letter on. Wednesday, June ninth. From Zenith Consulting Engineers asking for a request of his client, Mr. Crosley. To respectfully request a continuance to the next scheduled planning board meeting for June twenty-fourth. So at this time, I'd make a motion to continue. The hearing for one twenty-four, one twenty-six, one twenty-eight, one thirty Crooked Lane. To our June twenty-fourth meeting at seven o'clock.
Second that.
Alright, I have a motion and a second, all in favor, Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
And myself, both aye. So Norman Arco, did you?
No, I just wasn't sure. If it'd be anything tonight, so just logged in, so thank you very much, and.
You're welcome to stick around, it's exciting.
I will, I will say, I'll give. Bizio Construction, I have personal experience with their building. Of lots and they do a great job, and I just was listening into that project and would just give. It, it's a good thing for the town when they're building, so I just give that two cents, since I'm here.
Yeah, no, appreciate it, yeah, he does have a good reputation.
Alright, thank you very much. Bye.
Alright.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Okay, so we've got through items two and four. I guess we'll sit tight if the gentleman from Outback can. Oh, here we go.
You will have to mute, turn the volume down on his computer all the way, so we don't get feedback.
Alright, hopefully that works a little bit better. Yeah, we got you there. Okay, I apologize for that. No problem. So yeah, I think we left it off at the last meeting that the, the board had voted to approve, the plan is submitted with the two conditions. To clarify with the Conservation Commission. And then just to clarify with the fire chief on the, keeping the exterior of the building clear. Keep giving them a twenty-foot path and, you know, the applicant was here last week and he, he agreed, he doesn't wanna keep any. Materials or anything stored around the building, so that it makes it accessible for him to move his equipment and stuff around the building. So we have no problem with keeping that lane cleared. Okay, excellent. So should we take a reaffirming vote, Kathy, at this point, I mean, is, is action required or basically it was all done, so? Everything's been satisfied, and I, I think from the, the letters that we got, that there is no concern, so that conditional approval carries. So, you're good? Okay, great, awesome, thank you very much. Thanks for coming in. Thank you. Alright, so next item on the agenda is Ledgewood Estates. Release of municipal interest in subdivision security update, which I saw in our packet. Email from Amy Questle. Stating that we, we can sign the Form K and hold it. So basically Kathy, this was just, the purpose was to get the paperwork done and not have to scramble at the eleventh hour. Or the twenty-third hour before a town meeting when it comes to fruition of approvals. I believe we already voted on this, so we can just have that to come out, now we didn't? Alright. I have. A document titled Town of Lakeville Planning Board Certificate of Completion and Release of Municipal Interest in Subdivision Security. The subdivision name is Ledgewood Estates, the owner is Paul E. Turner Corp. The address, owner's address is one Ledgewood Drive, Lakeville, Mass. The date of the subdivision plan, January five, two thousand sixteen, revised March third, two thousand sixteen. Land location, Ledgewood Drive, plan recorded at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds in. Land Book sixty, page six eighty. There was a deposit of money, it was a security. The undersigned being a majority of the planning board have determined that the above construction of ways and installation. Of municipal services in the subdivision referred to. Above have been completed in accordance with the board's rules and regulations to adequately serve the lots shown. On the above referenced plan pursuant to. General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one U, Town of Lakeville, a Massachusetts corporation, acting through its planning board. Hereby releases its interest in performance security. To the above. Executed and sealed this date of June tenth, two thousand twenty-one. I move that the planning board release the security and accept this document to sign.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Should there be any mention of approval at the next town meeting on this letter? If we're gonna sign it with today's date, that's my only concern. Is what's stopping this from going ahead previous to that?
We weren't gonna give it to them.
That's it, that we'll just hold it?
That's, I believe that was the plan, correct, Kathy? That you, that was the question to Amy Questle. I'm gonna just read Amy's response, yes, in my opinion. They can sign it and hold it based on the Town of Lakeville. Planning Board Subdivision Rules and Regulations, Section three, one K. So council has actually reviewed this document, Kathy? Yeah, so Amy Questle has reviewed this, she said we can sign it and hold it until. That, I, until we need be, I guess, but. I guess I will retract my motion and amend my motion, state. That. I move the Lakeville Planning Board. Vote to release the security and sign this. Certificate of Completion and Release of Municipal Interest in Subdivision Security for Ledgewood Estates. And hold this document until the town meeting that it's on the agenda to accept the road.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor, Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack? And myself, both aye, let the record show, Jack voted. Affirmatively. Said, review of the following zoning board of appeals petitions. First one is fifty-six Main Street Barlow Sign, which is the dominos that we did the site plan review on. Does anybody have any comments? So we'd like to make a recommendation on this to the zoning board of appeals. Uh, does anybody have any comments? So we'd like to make a recommendation on this to the zoning board of appeals. No comment is, Barbara's pretty passionate about the sign by law.
I did.
You, you wanted to make a recommendation, Jack?
I thought one of this, I thought one of the entry signs was too small, the letting, the letter, the lettering that said enter was too small. And I think with, uh, the Dollar Tree store there in Domino's, I think it needs to be, you know, in, if you read all the documentation that was provided, that Kathy provided us with. It says the, that they want to make the signs, so it's clear, so it's not confusing to the, to the customers, you know, where to go. And I think the original, the, the initial sign where it says enter. The words enter need to be larger. This, the, the, the logo of Domino's is bigger than the word enter, and I think it should just be the reverse. As they've done in some of their other signs. If you look at some of the, of the signs that Kathy provided, it shows that the Domino's sign was smaller and the lettering was bigger. But in this enter sign, it was just the reverse, so I think it should go back the other way.
I kind of feel like that's something that we should have. Picked up at site plan review, because now it's. It's just, that's not getting addressed. Uh, I, what's getting addressed is a relief to the sign by law. Which I believe is the number of signs. So we're looking at the exact same documentation that we saw for site plan review. Uh, but again, zoning board of appeals, correct me if I'm wrong Kathy, they're only gonna look at where they need relief for the sign by law.
Yeah, well, I think that the sign package changed again. By requested by corporate. And now they're looking for one additional sign on the building, which I don't know if that is the same sign from. The other meeting and the directional signs are larger than the two feet allowed, so.
I think we should send a recommendation to, uh, stick with the bylaws to, uh, CBA. In honor of Barbara.
That a motion? She's not dead. She, she'll be back, it's okay. But I, I agree that, uh. I think that. She is passionate about that and, uh, not that she recommended or gave anything to us, but I do think that, uh. It seems like the, the board's. General feeling right now has been our, as of late is to. Better adhere to the sign by law.
Correct, yes.
So would you like to put that into a formal motion?
I will make a motion to, uh, send a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. Uh, that we would like to see them adhere to.
Not grant relief?
Yes, thank you, not grant relief. For the sign recommendation.
For the sign proposal.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion. On the floor, and I have a second. All in favor, Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself, alright, motion carries unanimously. We'll put a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals to recommend not granting relief on the sign by law. Uh. Next item is Klein de Silva, forty five Shore Ave. Uh, I actually looked at this Tuesday night in Concom. This is, uh, a, a woman that's gonna try and replace a screen porch with an exactly the same size screen porch. To me, this is not something that we would comment on. Uh, so I'm gonna make the recommendation that, I, I, I moved it. The planning board make no comment on forty five Shore Ave.
I would second that. I would like to notice that, uh, how nicely the font is on the, uh, did you see the, uh, did you see the thing they sent in?
Well.
Like from colonial times?
I think that that was, uh. A, a swing of the pendulum from the, the first cartoon that they put in. Uh, so that, that wasn't much improved. From. The napkin. So I have a motion and a second to make no recommendation. All in favor, Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
So. Uh, item seven on the agenda is a fee schedule update. Um, Michelle, were you gonna?
Um, you know, I think Barbara was the one that. Had, I think she had said she had heard back from Nate with some feedback. And that was the last. That I recall on this, um, I don't know.
Do you want to continue this until the next meeting when Barbara returns?
Yes, let's.
Alright, um. So I, I make a motion to continue the fee schedule discussion until July eighth. Uh. Twenty twenty one planning board meeting at seven PM.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself, alright. Uh. So we have two sets of minutes. Uh, has everybody got a chance to look through those? We have April eighth, twenty twenty one, and May twenty seventh, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty one.
Yes.
Alright, um, I. Does anybody have any changes or corrections to either of those?
No.
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 Make a motion to approve the April eighth, twenty twenty one minutes of meeting for the planning board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself, alright. Um, the May twenty seventh minutes, I was absent. Um, I was not listed as present, but should I be listed as absent or no?
I just usually list who's present.
Okay.
If you want me to start adding it, I can.
Nope, I, it, it, it's clear either way, I just usually hear, so I never really look at who's absent. So if that's how we're doing it, we just keep doing it that way. Um. So I, where I wasn't present, I'm not gonna make a motion or vote. Uh, I will call the vote, but. Does anybody want to make a motion on the May twenty seventh minutes?
So moved, uh, to approve the meeting minutes from May twenty seventh.
I have a motion, and I get a second.
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 I have a motion and a second. All in favor, Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
And I abstain. Uh. I, I would have voted on them because I watched the meeting, but I didn't need to because we still had it for him, so approve. Uh, next item on the agenda is the reorganization of the board. Uh, there has been some discussion, uh, between Barbara and Peter. Uh, so it's not rediscussion of all seats, but just the vice chair seat. Uh, Barbara has offered up to Peter and he has. Expressed interest, so I make a motion to, uh. Have Peter take the vice chair position for the planning board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Um, I, I know that I have spoken with Barbara on this and, um, she was in favor of this, so.
Yep, yeah, for the record, I don't want this to look like we're voting Barbara out because she's not present. It actually was Barbara that offered this up and, uh. So it's, it's a good thing. So I have a, a motion and a second. All in favor, Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself, vote aye. Motion carries. Peter is the new vice chair. Congratulations, Peter.
Congrats to you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Broad shoulders.
Old business. I got nothing, nothing on this. New business. Uh, we have to set dates for the plan approval authority. Which I did see something.
Don't you know what that is?
So. Kathy, you have a potential meeting date of July eighth, which is our next meeting anyway, or that's two meetings from now, sorry. Do we have anything to discuss at the PAA meeting at this point?
I know you had asked me to do this, it kind of got forgotten.
Yeah, um, so, so let's, I don't mind, we'll post this meeting, or we'll, we'll mention, or call the meeting date now. And if nothing comes in, we'll just open and close the hearing to satisfy the requirements of the plan approval authority. So I make a motion to set a meeting date. Uh, set two meeting dates, one for July eighth. Twenty twenty one and another meeting date of October fourteenth, twenty twenty one. And I will note that. The deadline for submissions is that. Ten days prior? Is ten days prior to both those meeting dates. Uh, so I have a motion to set two meeting dates.
Second.
For the plan approval authority. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
And myself, vote aye. Um. I just, I, I guess I want to clarify for the record when we do that, Kathy, we have on the. Potential meeting, meeting schedule in our package that it would begin at seven PM. Usually we start that a little early. Uh. Should I make note and? Alright, I'm gonna clarify. Uh. Meeting dates that we just set, I want to clarify that, that July eighth and the October fourteenth. Plan Approval Authority meetings will be starting at six forty five PM. So, uh, do we need a motion for that? I just publicly called it out at. Great, got that one done? Now, this is the next item on the new business. Uh, set dates for discussion. I kind of don't. I, I want to find out about fall town meeting, if we're gonna have one. This is not something that I want to. Drag out and. Put us through the wringer on something that's not gonna happen. Don't need to do this. And I also feel like. Those, we, we recently received a couple of preliminary plans, just to freeze zoning, and I don't want to. Open the floodgates with that discussion until we're fully prepared to know what's gonna happen. Uh. So at this time, I'm not gonna set any meeting dates or discussion on bylaw change. Uh, and we'll, we'll hold off until we. Can at least find out if there's gonna be a fall town. Does everybody agree with that, or you?
Yep, makes sense.
Okay. Um. Making the announcement that, that planning board's next scheduled meeting is June twenty fourth, twenty twenty one at seven PM. Uh. Does anybody else have anything that they'd like to? Bring up before we, uh, conclude our business tonight? No grievances, any grievances you want to air?
Not that this is more, you know.
I, I have no planning board grievances to air. So. Well, how was it? What's that?
We have plans to be signed whenever you guys can make it in.
Yeah, actually I have, uh, those. Four big rolls I keep forgetting to grab when I look at them on the floor.
I'll get by tomorrow, Kathy, of this stuff to sign.
I'll come there. I'll be there.
Okay, sounds good.
Um, motion to adjourn, Mark?
I second that. Um, just, uh, before we go, just a little discussion. Um, plan approval authority. As a clarification for Jack is. The Lakeville Planning Board. Also takes on the responsibilities of the low income housing. Uh, forty, the, the forty B and forty R housing and there's. Any. Uh, what do they call those? It's not, is it constructive? It's, uh, the type of permit that it is.
Don't ask me.
When, when you approve one of those projects, is Kathy?
Go on, Peter, you must know this.
This is only forty R, is that right? Um.
Okay, so we're in charge of. That and this quotas that are supposed to be met or if they're not met and there's tallies that. Of the percentage of those forty R houses in Lakeville compared to the rest of the town and you're supposed to try and achieve ten percent. If you're, you can stop taking them or approving them, which will never hit ten percent, but basically the plan approval authority is. A special name for the oversight of the forty R housing.
Hey, good, thanks. I had never heard of the term before.
Okay. Uh. So I have a motion and I seconded Peter's motion to adjourn. Uh, so at this time, uh, vote, Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself. Motion carries unanimously, meeting is adjourned.